...minutes.
So move.
Sorry. Motion by Mr. Wireball, seconded by Mr. McKeever to accept the February nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen regular meeting minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. This is the time where we grant permission for visitors to speak. Our first visitor speaking this evening is Fire Chief Jake Hiller. He has his two thousand and eighteen annual report.
Why, thank you.
Jake? It's all yours.
Well, yeah, two thousand and eighteen's interesting. Didn't start for me until April. Chad had, Chad Schwimmling, Captain Schwad, Chad Schwimmling happened to be our acting chief for basically eleven months while I was off with the accident. He did a fantastic job of keeping everything going, so appreciated what Chad did. Soon as I got back, we had Lieutenant John Sheeper leave us. He retired after twenty-eight years of service. He was ahead of our side of the hazardous materials team for the county. We shared it with Daddy. He was also the secretary, emptying fire investigator. And being only a grain bin, you know, he builds grain bins. He was great in our expert grain bin operations, which is excellent and familiar to him now. So, you know, he's gonna be missed, and I worked with him twenty-eight years, and it's hard when you come back and your friend leaves, you know? But you guys have all done that, your jobs and stuff, but it was real tough seeing him go on. He had a great career. I wish him luck. They're having some family difficulties now with his dad. He's sick, so I hope you guys could pray for him and wish him the best of luck. Then in August, I come back. Firefighter Oscar Ray, who'd been here a couple of years, he left to go to Marion City. He's a medic, you know? They seem to run a lot, so he don't love EMS. He wanted to go and keep his car going. Plus, that's where he's from. He enjoys Marion, and I wish him the best of luck. Hopefully, they've been having a lot of fires lately. Hope he doesn't get hurt or anything, but he's gonna be missed. And then in May, Eric McNutt was promoted to lieutenant because of John's absence. We want to congratulate Eric on that. And the thing is, now we have, since I've been back, basically, we have three new officers out of six. So what I have done is changed the command structure a little bit. I put each officer in charge of a section of our department. I've sectioned it all. Captain Schwimmling, of course, he's second in command. He's in charge of operations and maintenance. We have Captain Sparks, who's in charge of our inspection program. Captain Sardel with the fire prevention for us, goes to the schools, does a great job doing that. And to that Casey Gillen, he's in charge of our EMS and coordinates with both the companies that was life support and now the portment EMS. Lieutenant Greg Hershey, he is in charge of our hazardous materials team. And Lieutenant Derek McNutt, who's in charge of fire investigations, so that keeps them quite busy. They're also all in charge of training for their shifts, because there's a captain and a lieutenant on each shift, and we have three of them. Another thing we have, I come back to, they signed a new contract between the city and Union. I guess it took a while, but hey, it's done. Glad to see that's done. Phil Labou for the Union, of course, went, it was amazing, and their touring drive was incredible. You know, that's two things that the Union really does well for the city. They've collected codes, money and everything, so food. They just did a wonderful job. The other thing is, we've got these new guys. They love to do things, and I love that for our new guys. Jeremy McLott, we have, he is on me every day. Hey, can I put into this brand? Can I put onto that brand? Well, last year alone, they got nearly two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in grants, which covered air packs, coats, nozzles, a ventilator, iPads, and thermal imaging cameras. You know, that's a pretty good haul for a year and for our new guys to do that. And it was more than Jeremy, but I just like to put it on Jeremy, because he hit me up again today. Can we do this? Can we do this? By all means, go for it. So, and that's what we seem to, when you change over from having, you know, us old guys, because I'm the old guy, and get the new guys that really don't know they really want to do something, and I want to use everything they know. He came from Myrtle Beach, too, so, you know, bigger department come back here, so it's sort of nice. I don't know if everybody got to look at my annual report. You guys will all have a chance to look at it as well. In it, when you get a chance, of course, the first part that I have is from A to G, and then I go back into when everybody started. And I wanted to mention one thing about firefighter Barry Urschler. He is our historian, and the guy is doing such an incredible job. He showed me about a week and a half ago what he's been doing with all the retirees that have died. It's called Find a Grave. He put them all on, he looked them up, put them on there, put pictures on Find a Grave. If you get on it, you can get into his sites. Barry Urschler looked down and has virtual grave, about cemeteries. Get in there, there's one for these fire departments. There's guys back in eighteen fifty-nine. You know, there's a lot of things that I didn't know, but Barry's looking up everything. So it's sort of nice to see what he's done, and if you ever get a chance, please come up. We've got a ton more pictures and everything that's gone on the wall that Barry has seen and done, so I really appreciate what he's doing. Let's see, after that, and it keeps going back. I put everybody in who's on what platoon. Their certifications are in here. Everybody at the department's at least EMTB. We have five medics on duty right now, well, on duty on those ships together, so. We have seven fire inspectors. We have four arson investigators, and we have three fire EMS instructors. So there's a lot of things we're doing now. We're doing a lot of training in the department that all counts for our CTOs, which saves the city a lot of money when we do it. And the other thing is, with the fire inspection, we were just talking a minute ago about ISO ICA then last month, and I think we did a great job with what we have. They liked our fact that we have a lot of trading records. I sent all our officers to ICS three and four hundred, which gives us, when you do it, becomes the first thing you want to see was our NFPA ten twenty-one, which is standard for fire officer professional qualifications. If you have ICS three and four hundred, we all qualify. And that was one of our big things we didn't do on our last ISO rating, which was eight years ago. So that's huge. You know, training was one of the things we lacked in officers, and we have that now, so. But I'm trying to get everybody to become an inspector, because that's another big issue for ISO. They like to have full-time inspectors, but they know with the budgets of cities and stuff, especially our size, that's a possibility, you know? So if seven right now, that's more than half of the department. If we can get a couple more, I know the young guys all want to do it, so. If we can get a class in Rockford County, and the more you have, we can go countywide and do it, the chances are we can get it for free, so I'm all about free. In the next page, we'll talk about all what the officers are in charge of, and then I had, everybody's in charge of a department, like Steve Sardel, Fire Prevention. He wrote something in here, what they do and what they've done. Brian Sparks wrote something. He showed the letters that he brought out. He sent each business owner downtown before the Rockford special lift. He would do a walkthrough, which he did, and that turned out really well. Then we had Casey Easterday wrote what he, excuse me, Casey Gillen. We've got two Cs, you always forget who's who. He basically talked about how we were doing with EMS and how we were working together with life support and portment ambulance, and it seems like we're doing a pretty good job with both of them right now, so. Three portments anymore. Last year, we both of them. Greg Hershey put in what he was doing for hazmat in our training. And Eric McNutt, his was pretty good here, talked about his fire investigations, and he actually brought in pictures of different fires that occurred, which we investigate all of them, because, you know, they're not all arson. Ninety-nine point nine percent of them aren't arson, but you have to investigate every fire, so it's something to look at. And then in the back, we have what, Med account? Who is our billing experts for EMS? What we did from twenty seventeen to twenty eighteen, which increased because we had more runs, so. That's pretty much it. In the back, of course, it would be our runs, which is just a bunch of them. I put everyone in there so you guys will look at. That's pretty much what the city fire department's done in twenty eighteen. Like I said, mine was a little short, nine months, but hey, it's been different. I'm glad I'm back. I feel good about it, you know? I think the guys are willing to work hard for the citizens of U.Sires and you guys, so. If you guys have any questions, I'm more than willing to take them.
Questions, or any fire department?
But I do have one other thing. This year, can I, last year's over, this year, what we're trying to work on, too, is getting our manpower back up. Right now, we're at twelve firemen and myself, you know? We usually carry fifteen, but right now, we're at twelve. That's one thing we're gonna work on, and the other thing is an inch. We have Grant, we wrote a grant out there. We're still waiting. We haven't been cut, which is a good thing. Right now, they're starting to work. It started last week. Of course, we haven't heard our name, but the good thing is, we haven't heard our name be cut. And if that does happen, you know, we talked about the finance committees that we can come up here, and we are ready to show you guys what we have and what we think we need. You know, we're not gonna go for any Taj Mahals, but that way, there's something huge, but trucks are twenty-one years old, our first one's out, so.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I think you forgot to mention, did you mention about your involvement in Spoktacular?
Oh, I did not.
That's such a huge event for the city.
It gets bigger and bigger all the time.
Yeah, you guys leave that, but can't say enough good things about that.
Well, yeah, it's an incredible event. I mean, there's so many people out there, you wanna think, I can't even tell who's all there. You know, you walk around, and it's just wall-to-wall kids, families, and people are actually out there trying to help and do things for those kids, and it's a wonderful thing. It started out a real small area, you know, and now it's just gonna keep growing and growing and growing, and I hope it does. You know, I hope it keeps going, but yeah, that was a major, major important thing that the city does for our citizens. Well, let's put it this way, the county. It's grown worthy, you know, but a ton of people out there, so, and we appreciate everybody out there. Thank you for reminding me.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jake. Anyone else would like to address council this evening? No one? Moving on to communications and petitions?
We've got two communications here. The first is just a short thank you card. Your kind expression of sympathy is deeply appreciated. The Jacob Binix family. And secondly, we have a letter from the mayor to the city council, near city council. The City of U.Sires Traffic Commission sent a letter to council dated November twenty-one, two thousand and eighteen, to ask for an amendment to the traffic control map for the ODOT North Sandusky Avenue project. ODOT asked the city to conduct an open house meeting with the public to gather comments from the residents in that area about adding bike lanes on North Sandusky Avenue. Council members were sent most of the comments on January fifteen and the final comment on January thirty-first. As a recap of those comments, four forms, there were four forms with questions, seven forms with suggestions for different alternatives for bike lanes, four forms with no bike lanes and alternative suggestions for bike lanes, five forms with no bike lanes, one form in favor of bike lanes, and one form in favor of bike lanes with an alternative suggestion for bike lanes. All those who filled out a comment form were sent responses. The administration believes it would be best to look into alternative routes for the bike-walk path as the grant funds are available to extend the bike-walk path. ODOT is proceeding with the project with the parking remaining on North Sandusky Avenue and no bike lanes. If council decides differently and would like to make the traffic control map changes, a simple change order could be done. Sincerely, Jeff Rees, your mayor, and look, these comments just need to be accepted and filed.
I need a motion to accept the file.
So move.
Second. Motion by Mr. Foote, seconded by Mr. Shaw. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. Moving into our standing committee reports.
I have.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Mr. McKeever?
Yes, I have a letter here. It's from Jerry E. Henick, eight and eleven South Sandusky Avenue, U.Sires, dated March third, two thousand and nineteen, to the City of U.Sires council members. Although I feel this should have been taken care of earlier, I am writing this letter due to the failure of the zoning committee to fairly represent the citizens of U.Sires. There is a E-Patch garage that is directly south of my property and has been condemned for approximately five years. I'll pass these photos around, so maybe that's also. As part of the history of the garage, it has been on fire, and the fire department was called. I welcome anyone to drive through the alley behind my house and see what is referred to in this letter. I am sure this is not an isolated incident, but it is a safety hazard. I also would recommend this to go before Health and Safety Committee, because I have personally witnessed children climbing in on the broken open door. There are other openings to access the garage. This could result in serious injury or worse. I have personally warned children of the danger involved in entering the garage. The recent windstorm blew two four-by-six-foot sections of the tin roof onto my property, and I have as much as twenty-foot pieces of a broken blown into my yard. I am constantly picking up small pieces that are in my yard, and I have to watch the weather reports to avoid the use of parking in my driveway. It goes without saying that my grandson cannot enjoy playing in the backyard anytime there is any type of wind blowing. I have been in contact with many City of U.Sires officials for five years with no resolution. Every city official that I have talked to have confided to me that it stops at the level of the judicial system and not the city. If this is the case, then the City of U.Sires and whoever is responsible in the judicial area need to come to an agreement to get this type of issue resolved. This is not an isolated incident. I have been a lifelong resident of U.Sires, and I'm concerned and want to see it grow. It concerns citizens, Jerry E. Henick, and the photos are enclosed, as everybody's seen. I'd like to submit this for record.
I need a motion to accept the letter.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Wireball. Motion by Mr. Wireball, seconded by Mr. Truca. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Comments?
It is a garage, not a house. We do tend to focus on the houses more than the garages, because I go up and down alleys and see some real horror shows. We've got a couple hundred that are out there right now with open violations. This isn't allowed, but they just can do. You know, it's, yeah, we gotta, what was the address again? It's actually eight seventeen. We talked earlier, you can just put eight eleven, but it's actually eight seventeen.
Eight, oh, eight seventeen, not eight eleven.
It's eight seventeen, yeah, it's the other direction.
Yes, eight seventeen, South Sandusky.
Yeah, we've had trash and other issues there previously that were taken care of and sold back up, and it's fully again a thing.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, it's an hardware issue. It's owned by, I think, it's owned by a group of brothers right now, four or five brothers. Troy, if you look on the daughter's website, it's Troy Adams, that all, I'm sorry, four or five, I think they're all brothers, so, yeah. Which complicates it, too, when it's a little bit more than one, so, you know, nearby, can't get service on some of them.
Is it in the court system?
Not right now, that is not. It was previously, and it'll be going back.
Okay.
I think, so.
Okay. Anything else under communications and petitions? Move on to our standing committee reports. Mr. Foote, would you like to get us started, please?
U.Sires City Joint Regular Committee meetings for Thursday, February twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen. Members present, Mark McKeever, Kevin Myers, Bruce Truca, Monica Sack, myself, Andrew Shaw, and Dan Wireball was absent. Up first, a meeting was called, the U.Sires City Joint Regular Committee meeting was called to order by myself at six P.M. There was no public participation. We moved on to orders of committee business. Economic Development Committee was called to order at six oh one P.M. We had Board of Zoning Appeals reappointments. Members, or members in attendance for Economic Development are Monica Sack, Mark McKeever, and myself. Number one, Board of Zoning Appeals reappointment. Rodney Stride's four-year term on the board inspired at the end of two thousand and eighteen, and he has expressed an interest in being reappointed to a new term. McKeever made a motion to reappoint Stride to the board, with a second by Sack. Motion passed by voice vote. And that are good as a full council, for a vote on March fifth, no legislation required. Vote to recess the Economic Development Committee at six thirty-five P.M.
Okay, any questions or comments regarding the report? Then we do need a motion then to reappoint Mr. Rodney Stride to a four-year term on the Board of Zoning Appeals.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mr. McKeever?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Foote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. Don't be happy, I'm just sitting in the audience. Planning Committee, Mr. McKeever?
Yes, Planning Committee met February twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen, from six oh three to six twenty-four P.M. Members present, Monica Sack, Bruce Truca, Kevin Myers, and myself, Chair. Number one, zoning variance notification protocol. Brett Miller at seven eighty-five Arrowhead Drive said a recently branded zoning variance changed the character of his neighborhood and asked the committee to consider other methods of notification beyond a legal notice published in the local newspaper and letters sent to property owners within two hundred feet of the property in question. Zoning administrator Landon Hill noted that he doesn't object to widening the zone of notification beyond two hundred feet, but suggested the average feedback his office receives to letters of, to letters of ten percent leads him to believe it wouldn't make much of a difference. He added that the fee for a variance might have to increase as well to cover the increased manpower and postage. He also suggested that the signs posted in the applicant's yard for a period of time could be a better way to address Miller's concern, and Law Director Rob Bradliff agreed. State law only requires the legal notice. Putting variance request on the city website and social media accounts was also discussed. The suggestions will come before the Board of Zoning Appeals for input at the next meeting on March fifth. Matter was continued. Number two, here recessed Planning Committee at six twenty-four. I will state, we did discuss it at the VZA meeting today, and they're gonna submit a letter. It'll come to committee, I do believe, hopefully by Thursday, so we can discuss it. And they are in favor of doing the signage in the yard and also trying to put something on the website to make it readily available to the public, so.
Okay.
Make the signs less colored.
I'm sure we'll make them a color that's.
We actually use that color.
Okay, moving on, service committee, Mr. Truca?
Service Committee met six twenty-five P.M. Members present were Doug Foote, Andrew Shaw, and myself, Chair. Water pollution control loan fund application. Brand Center Carroll Incorporated is requesting a resolution authorizing the mayor to apply for zero percent loan funds through the state water pollution control loan fund for group one design and group two design and construction, part of the city's ongoing EPA mandated combined sewer overflow reduction project. Future resolutions will be requested later in the year with more specifics. Shaw made a motion requesting said resolution with a second by vote. Motion passed by voice vote. I recessed the Service Committee at six twenty-eight P.M.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments regarding the minutes? Okay, moving on, Health and Safety, Mr. Myers?
Aye.
Are you in that one? Okay.
Yes, okay, Health and Safety met Thursday, February twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen, six twenty-eight to six thirty, six P.M. Members present, myself, Bruce Truca, Andrew Shaw, and Kevin Myers, Chair. Number one, Ohio Fire Code update. Law Director Rob Bradliff explained that U.Sires codified ordinance one five zero one point zero one should be amended to adopt the twenty-seventeen version of the Ohio Fire Code. The existing ordinance adopts the two thousand and seven version, and Bradliff noted that many changes have been made to the Ohio Fire Code between then and twenty-seventeen. The matter of requiring carbon monoxide detectors in rental properties within the city is an open project in the committee, but Bradliff suggested codified ordinance fifteen oh one point oh one be changed before that matter's addressed further. Shaw made a motion to request legislation amending U.Sires codified ordinance one five zero one point zero one to adopt the twenty-seventeen version of the Ohio Fire Code with a second by McKeever. Motion passed by voice vote. Myers recessed. Number two, Myers recessed the Health and Safety Committee at six thirty, six P.M.
Questions or comments regarding the minutes from the Health and Safety Committee? None. Moving on, public lands and buildings, Mr. Truca?
Public lands and buildings met at six thirty, six P.M. Members present were Doug Foote, Mark McKeever, and myself, Monica Sack, the chair. Number one, city parking lots. It was suggested that the city's parking lots at two twenty North Sandusky Avenue and one sixty-six North Pother Street be transferred to the Community Improvement Corporation so it could look into selling the lots on the grounds that are, they primarily benefit one or a handful of adjacent businesses. Concerns were expressed about the ripple effect it could have on parking elsewhere in the area. The administration was advised to contact businesses that have been placed, have placed large trash bread receptacles on the city's parking lots above possibly relocating them. The matter was continued. I recessed the Public Lands and Buildings Committee at six fifty-four P.M.
Questions or comments regarding this report for the Public Lands and Buildings Committee? None. And moving on, Finance Committee, Mr. Sack. And we have Mr. Wireball.
I'll have to do that, huh? All right, Finance Committee, Thursday, February twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen, beginning at sixty-four P.M. Members present, Kevin Myers, Andrew Shaw, and Monica Sack, Chair. WPCLF loan application, Brand Center Carroll Incorporated is requesting a resolution authorizing the mayor to apply for zero percent loan funds through the state water pollution control loan fund for group one design and group two design and construction, part of the city's ongoing EPA mandated combined sewer overflow reduction project. The Service Committee has requested such legislation. Myers made a motion to approve the request with a second by Shaw. Motion passed by voice vote. Sack recessed the Finance Committee at six thirty-five P.M.
Any questions or comments regarding the Finance Committee minutes? None? Good finish, first, please.
There was no public participation, and Sack asked for a motion to join, adjourn the Joint Regular Committees. Motion by Foote and seconded by Myers to adjourn at six fifty-five P.M. Motion passed.
Thanks, thank you very much. The Health and Safety Committee met a special session on Thursday, February the twenty-eighth, two thousand and nineteen, at four thirty-two P.M. We need the minutes from the Health and Safety Committee meeting, Mr. McKeever?
As she's already stated, Thursday, February twenty-eighth, two thousand and nineteen, at four thirty-two P.M. to four fifty-four P.M. Members present, Bruce Truca, Andrew Shaw, and Kevin Myers, Chair. The Special Health and Safety Committee meeting was called by Mayor Jeff Reesert to discuss repeal and replacement of the bill and employee manpower ordinances. The meeting was called to order by Myers at four thirty-two P.M. Number two, repeal replacement of. Number two, repeal replacement of employee manpower. Police Chief David Kepke explained that his department presently must use its officers on occasion to staff the dispatch position. To meet the goal of having the position staffed completely by civilians, he suggested the hiring of five part-time dispatchers. The wage range for the part-time positions would be 1680 an hour to 2093 an hour. Schock made a motion to request legislation repealing and replacing the existing billlet ordinance to include the new positions with a second by Truca. After further discussion, Truca made a motion to amend his motion to request legislation repealing and replacing the existing billlet ordinance to include five part-time police dispatchers and six full-time dispatchers with a second by Schock. Motion passed by voice vote. Schock made a motion to request legislation repealing and replacing the existing employee manpower ordinance to include five part-time police dispatchers and six full-time dispatchers with a second by Truca. Motion passed by voice vote. Number three, Myers adjourned the Health and Safety Committee at 4:54 PM.
Any questions in the audience regarding this report? None. Okay, moving on, the Finance Committee met in special session on Thursday, February 28th, 2019, at 4:54 PM. Mr. Wireball?
Yes, the members present were Kevin Myers and Schock and myself, Acting Chair. The special Finance Committee meeting was called by Mayor Jeff Reeser to discuss repeal and replacement of the billlet and employee manpower ordinances. The meeting was called to order by Wireball at 4:54 PM. Repeal replacement of billlet employee manpower. The Health and Safety Committee approved motions requesting legislation to repeal and replace the existing billlet and employee manpower ordinances to include five part-time police dispatchers and six full-time dispatchers. Myers made a motion to approve the request with a second by Schock. Motion passed by voice vote. Wireball adjourned the special Finance Committee at 4:55 PM.
Well, thank you. Any questions or comments regarding that report? Moving on, Traffic Commission. We have no Traffic Commission minutes. Are there any traffic questions for the mayor this evening? None? Okay, and moving on, I need a motion then to accept the committee minutes and related committee reports collectively. Sorry. Motion by Mr. Foe, second by Mr. McKeever to accept the committee minutes and related committee reports collectively. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. Moving on, Reporters City Officers. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I'm here.
You're here. Oh, you did sneak back in. I thought you were missing.
I had to get some couples to have some water in the room.
Okay.
Because I got a lot of words tonight, so.
Okay.
Just wanted, in case I needed any, I wanted to have some drinks. So, thank you, Madam President. Got to show a report before I jump into my State of the City. So, there was a lot of things I did want to mention that have gone the past couple of weeks, and we didn't have the opportunity to go by without mentioning. Mr. Wireball and myself were at the Arts for Success on February 25th, and it was an enthusiastic crowd, some fantastic pieces. I was able to get a nice piece, but one of our mural artists, Mo Taylor, second lady and Besire's native, Tina East, that was in attendance and donated a beautiful wall of color. Another Besire's native, Judd Lightfoot, performed this always entertaining evolution of the island. It never gets old to me. And one of the attendants went a little crazy on that, Miss Ohio. And she loved this, and she had no idea of Judd. It did, so she was too... She really had a good time with that. She did a good job also singing the National Anthem. Thanks to all sponsors, all the people who have heard of that, Dave Bushtray, Amanda Sheets. I think they're raising over $20,000. And that place is doing so much good for Besire's. And future generations have been a focus of our administration for many years, so we like to contribute when we can. I've been with junior achievement third graders at Hannah Crawford Elementary last week. Two classes, probably 50 kids. A lot of fun, always a lot of fun. Mr. Al Basin heads up that program. He ended up building a city. It was really nice. I was invited to the cooking school graduation at Trillia. Those three grads, Kim, Penny, and Anna, they helped cook and food, and great job. Part of the Rich Little New World Project helps to educate and inform the society of those that are less fortunate than us. Dick Turey heads up this program. He's a teacher and court stunts. Everybody who was involved is a big patting back. I also met with Mr. Love's high school students, junior, seniors, history classes at DHS. All the kids I've met with in high school are great kids. I don't see any exception. They don't give a bad rap. I think it's, you know, I think it's misplaced. Every generation is absolutely different, but we spoke about the past, the future of Besire's, and what part they may play in the future. It's always, I invite them to make Besire's their home, not just their hometown. If they go to college, service come back. That's what many people do. An interesting tidbit of information about all high school students, they all ask about, when are we going to get a Chipotle? So, if there is a thing on the Chipotle website that you can actually get in there, put our zip code in, we do it a lot every day, so. So, we'd love to have a Chipotle here too, and please do that if you want a Chipotle here. Kelly Patterson and I continue to look forward to the bicentennial, which is rapidly approaching. We talk with various groups about the melting plans and our two close-up project. We're living very long. Two years will come pretty quickly. The Ohio Health President and other dignitaries, executives from Ohio Health were not with us last week here in the City Hall, Vincent Yates, and they obviously want to improve our health and make it an important part of the future of the health of Besire's in the county. And last but certainly not least, another visit from the Besire's Elementary Sunshine Club. They came to City Hall and presented us with this beautiful shirt. I could actually put it out on my Facebook page. I don't know if you saw, we have it hanging up in our office. It's got Delaware names on it, and their fingerprints. Isn't that nice? And they got a lot of nice hugs on it. It's one of the joys about being mayor is, you know, they appreciate you. They also appreciate the safety force that bring us a nice box of gifts, so. I think it's so important to teach gratitude at that young age. It's to be able to be thankful for things. It's so important to lead in a happy life. Okay, I promised on my State of the City that I would not add them. There's one place I do have to add them, so I'm going to read it. I will tell you also that I will be taping this for, to be on our website as well as access channels. And if you haven't already signed up, liked us on Facebook, we have a city Besire's Facebook page, which we're doing. I've got a daily, or every other day, update about going to the City, which is getting some really good comments. So, State of the City for 2019, and I'll jump right into it too. Thank you again, Madam President. This is my fifth State of the City address. I'd like to begin by saying it's a distinct honor to sit in this chair, date my hometown for the past five years, and this dress. I'll do a little differently. I want to reflect over the past five years about the challenges we faced and how we came about making decisions and how those decisions will have a positive effect on the future of Besire's. So, you know, I began my services as mayor with the untimely passing of Mayor Moore in my time in office, so I'm very quick on it. We have many challenges facing us, and we met those challenges head-on with our ultimate goal to be able to prepare Besire's for a prosperous future. Summary of the issues we face and how we address them are here. First of all, federal EPA mandates. The city has been in contentious negotiations with the Ohio EPA and the US EPA for over 10 years. The Ohio, rather than getting all the detail, the Ohio EPA refers to the higher authority of the US EPA for corrective action. Through the efforts of our administration and our engineers, especially our cadets, we were able to negotiate a favorable long-term solution for the citizens of Besire's that allows us to spread out the cost of separating our stormwater from our sewer system over a longer period of time. And we're well underway to being compliant. In 2018, we were able to secure an interest-free loan in the state of Ohio and speed up the process. Borrowing funds free of interest expense and which will also allow us to perform tap in as of 2019 crisis. It saves our residents hundreds of thousands of dollars over the life of a loan. Number two, water treatment plant. The old water plant that is now being torn down nearly flooded out in 2007, and a flooded plant that has compromised the city's water supply for months. The building also had structure issues that were evident and consistent with the 70-year-old building. We followed through on a plan from Mayor Moore's administration and with unanimous approval of City Council, opened a beautiful new state-of-the-air facility in 2017. This facility can produce up to 3 million gallons of water a day. And we are aggressive in providing water outside City limits, and we just completed G-line, press line, and road. And we'll also look at other areas of expansion. Opioid issues. Besire's suffered from a high rate of overdose deaths and opioid abuse, one of the highest per capita rates in the state. We've seen tremendous improvement the last five years, and we're now aiming toward the bottom of the state. It has taken a team effort to achieve this, both strong policing, made possible by the passive or safety forces, one being from judicial and health department plays a role in this. And we couldn't have done it without grassroots involvements by the wonderful local organizations that we mentioned so many times, treating persons with drug issues on a one-on-one basis. City appearance was another issue. We have an attractive city. A person just has to view other towns to see how we compare, but we can't ignore some of the issues that we made is better. In 2014, we were able to to rock our worst eyesore, Shines Theater, creating a beautiful park in its place, thanking the state of Ohio and all local owners who made it a part of reality. Special mention goes to Senator Dave Burt for acquiring funds for us, as well as Timken Foundation, Ohio Mutual Insurance Group, and Besire's Road Materials. Shines Art Park is an indious jewel in our park system. We are working on plans for a permanent stage will be complete by the end of June next year, 2020. We also made strong efforts to improve our park system. We invested over $150,000, $150,000 in all other park pool repairs, and we added popular sliding in 2017. All shelters will have a long-lasting metal roof by the end of the year. Basketball court was refurbished with the help of the Hyde family. Tennis courts will be refurbished this year, and pickleball courts will be added this year too. Lions field fences were replaced, and Harmon Park will see expansion of soccer field as we repurpose the land and not both the old water treatment plant. Besire's has been losing trees for decades, and our tree lines show more stumps than trees in many places. It's not an attractive site as you're driving through town trying to attract potential employers and residents. One of my first projects was to form a tree commission and fund a program that addresses planting, removal, and maintenance of our tree killer. We have already replanted our City Hall south corridor and have held two art parade celebrations. And I'm happy to announce that Besire's was just named a Tree City USA for the second year in our history because of our tree program. Tree City USA is a prestigious award that costs nothing to achieve. Our only cost is a minimal amount, which is $2 per resident, and I ended the budget spent on making Besire's look really beautiful. This effort will pay off for decades, and I ask you to keep supporting this tradition. This is my first avenue. Val Sprang, myself, and Councilman Truca all graduated from Tree Academy last year. Derelict property, Mr. Radliff, take a bow. This is your responsible for acquiring one of the worst of the city's eyesores, and we can't thank you enough for that. We still have a few more that we would like to tear down, and I know that you have some properties in your line of design for acquiring and demolishing. Yeah, more than one. Demolishing derelict properties is often last resort. We've rather had a property owners pick up the properties and repurpose them, but it's been a know that we have you on the job. The addition of the building inspector, those approved by councils, paying big dividends too. We're starting to look better as a community and people means. Crawford County Land Bank, former county treasurer Gary Cole was instrumental in forming CCRTL, also known as the Land Bank. We have been able to acquire and demolish dozens of derelict property from the property of the community. Two in particular stand out. The struck properties of Roger Street were acquired and demolished last year. Thank you again, Mr. Radliff. We will continue to improve our neighborhoods as... Brother's Festival. I believe Besire's cannot be mentioned without thinking of the greatest festival in the state, the Brother's Festival. Rodney celebrated 50 years recently, and I wanted to make sure that we have a long-term and fair partnership in the festival. I propose that the city discontinue the use of charges, charging for services that we provide while at the same time encouraging the festival board to share the savings with local organizations to make the increase in local participation in the festival. And I believe that is a win-win for everybody. Economic development. As far as I know, the city has never had an economic development department for lack of funds. A properly funded department would cost at least $200,000, funds that we don't have available. I propose to invest $50,000 in the Crawford County Partnership along with Crawford County and Galleon to be our economic development department. The partnership not only focuses on job retention and growth, but also workforce development, which is needed to prepare our residents for the type of jobs offered in Besire's. You've heard them speak here many times, different strategies that address our needs from Gary and Aaron and Hannah, and I believe our investment is paying off and will continue to grow well into the future. As I mentioned last year, the 20 to 29 age group of our population is our fastest growing segment, and that's great news. We must invest to reverse our population decline, and thanks to your support for your investment in that program. Area employers are on the upswing, continue to be strong, hiring remains strong. Our problem is we need more people. You know, we don't have enough people to fill the jobs like a lot of communities have. Besire's railcar repair, just to single them out, they will be hiring over 100 more welders, and they're recruiting out of state. They've had 10 people move here out of state. Timken is hiring as well as most of our other employers, but we need more people to move here, and how do we get them to move here, right? Well, the city recently, City Council recently invested in a housing study with the Crawford Partnership to make a plan for our future housing, attracting workers, especially young families, to our area. The local economy is strong, and our issue is really not the quantity of jobs, but matching people up to the jobs available and improving worker skills to require higher-paying jobs. These issues have been a focus of our administration, one of the partnership and the success center. Innovation is cr... And I shouldn't say school systems too, we've had some programs in the school. Innovation is critical, and Besire's railcar repair, for instance, Elmen Building School on their site with cooperation with Pioneer. And the success center just opened up in that. If you haven't seen that, it's very impressive. Get a beer right here in Besire's. Isn't that great? Quality of life issues I want to address also. What do young families want in a community? Well, they want good businesses, organizations, restaurants, safe neighborhoods, churches, activities. We do well in many areas, but we need improvement in providing more small businesses, keeping a strong legacy of small business alive in this community. It goes well, well back into our first century. Each generation has stepped up and opened successful small businesses, but brick-and-mortar stores, we all know, face more challenges today with internet competition. Businesses need to be, have ingenuity and to be able to compete, it's just that simple. Take it from me and my family who moved here in 1950s. It's a great business town. It continues to be a great business town. Our administration is here to help you open your business in any way possible that we can. One of the first projects, as we're talking about quality of life issues, goes to develop a bi-comprehensive bike path plan, and we will be opening the first phase with the help of an OBNR grant in 2019, Southern Avenue. Also applied for another grant, which will be along the Sandusky River heading east from Harmon apart. Sandusky River, we pretty much cross every day. It's our most beautiful natural resource, one of the most beautiful in the state, and it needs to be cherished and appreciated. This is a long-term plan as grants and funds help us to develop it, but along with that and along with the trees and our parks, the bike path has the potential to fundamentally change our community. So, we're pushing hard for it. Transparency is very important to our administration. You know, we all have to follow sunshine laws, which we do. We're very sure about that. State Treasurer Josh Van Dell proposed a plan to make public the checkbooks of all communities that participate in the program. I was one of the first mayors to jump on the board and attended the opening press conference in Columbus and signed up Besire's for that. I believe in total financial transparency, and that's, if you can see our checkbooks I believe in total financial transparency, and that's, if you can see our checkbook spending on OhioCheckbook.com. There were a few glitches that they're working on that give just a little time, but you'll be able to see how our money, your money, is spent. We do not waste taxpayer funds on our administration. We don't have funds to waste, you know, for one thing. But our administration is also strictly, like I mentioned, we observe all total transparency, sunshine laws, budget issues. As our population has decreased, we have been innovative in ways to save taxpayer dollars, especially since our tax revenue has been, has been flat for four years. Our Service Director, Mr. Wagner, is very innovative. We propose combining supervisory positions, and we will soon have three supervisory positions that will, will not be replaced, but consolidating, saving taxpayers well over $150,000 a year. In addition, we have been diligent in contract negotiation, finding common ground with our union on how to provide vital services while staying in our budget. Health insurance costs have outpaced tax revenue growth as well as inflation, as you know, and we were able to make changes to our healthcare coverage that saves taxpayers over $200,000 a year, still providing own-dust plans in the city. And we are consolidating city workers to the Irving Street facility, formerly the ODOT facility. Recent sales of the Mary Street Garage and the Water Distribution Building on Marion Road will fund remodeling and repairs while providing two buildings for employment, another bin man for city taxpayers. We have already closed on the Mary Street property, and we expect the Marion Road property to close soon. RITA, R-A-T-A, Regional Income Tax Authority, council, this, I'm not sure who was on council back then, but there were, we should seriously consider, I've seen a proposal from RITA, you met with them several years ago. At that time, you rejected the change to RITA for tax collection. There's now over 300 cities in the state use RITA for tax collection, and we should, it's time we look at it again. We do not have the tools to keep track of residents' tax, federal and state tax payments, but RITA does, since it is part of the IRS Data Collection Program, a program limited to entities with a population of 250,000 people or more. The tax burden in Bucyrus needs to be shared fairly by every wage earner. It's only fair, and I'm referring this to the Finance Committee at this time. Innovation is required to continue providing the same quality of surfaces to our community, and it begins with fair tax collection. Looking to the future. Everything we do as an administration is done with an eye to the future. Bucyrus is competing with small and large communities for residents. I would argue that the current state of affairs in rural America, including cities like our own, requires new methods, new ardor, and especially innovative leaders to ensure a prosperous future for Bucyrus. Government alone cannot make Bucyrus great. It takes community unity, which is our theme for the upcoming bicentennial in 2021. Community unity in the form of our finite organizations, our service organizations, our youth programs, community unity in our schools and churches, community unity in our leaders and our residents. We are on the right path to growth, but the progress that we have made in the last five years with that progress, though, we shall have work to do. The decisions that we make now will determine where we will be in 20 years or beyond. Let us all look to the future with optimism, facing our challenges head-on, and working together to make Bucyrus one of the very best small towns in America. Community unity is the cornerstone of our future. And on a personal note, as I close here, I would like to once again thank all of you for your support during my battle last year with Hodgkins' lymphoma. I couldn't have done it without the support of all of you, especially my wife. My wife for 42 years, and girlfriend, many years before that, we were together a long time. She puts up with me, and my family, wonderful family and friends, and many friends that I've met through my job in the city. It's just wonderful to know all of you. What I learned during that battle was the value of a supportive phone call, an email, a card, prayers, just any kind of encouragement. I saved all my cards. I have been in remission since December and got my chemotherapy part removed last week, and I had a great report from the doc. And I thank you all from the bottom of my heart. It could have been, now, for Hodgkins is, has one of those that maybe had 12 chemotherapy treatments, and I was able to make it to work every day, at least part of the day except for the 12 days that I received treatment. But it could have been a lot worse, and I'm glad it's over, but again, thank you. And I have to single a couple of people that don't get mentioned much. They work for you in city government, Kelly Patterson and Jeff Wagner. They have a deep love for our community and are committed to building a better Bucyrus, and they were vital to my support in 2018. And if I haven't mentioned it before, Kelly will be leading the bicentennial committee. She volunteered for that big job. That's a huge job, but she's already taken on. So in closing, thank you. I want to thank Divine Providence for our two founders, who we'll be honoring this year, Sam and Mary Norton. All have worked so hard to make Bucyrus what it is today, including you folks here, City Council. It's a wonderful place to live, to work, play, to learn, to volunteer, to worship, and to be grateful for blessings received and the blessings to come. So I ask God to continue to best bless Bucyrus. And thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, for so many things.
Not so many, not so bad on the apples.
No, you did well, as is impressed. Okay, we have one referral come out of the report, referring RITA to the Finance Committee. I think your motion for that race, so move. Motion by Mr. Foote, second by Mr. Wagner. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you very much. So the Safety Director's report.
Yes, I'll take that.
You're gonna take that one, too?
Yeah, so the Jeff's report. The Fire Department SCBA bid awarded to Family Fire out of McConville, a total of $140,000, $24,765, Resolution Number 206, 2019, allowed them to mount that to exceed $135,000, something under that. The 2018 material bids, the advertisement runs through March 8th, and the bids will be open in March 12th. The Farmland bids, 2018, 2021, the advertisement runs through March 15th, and the bids will be open in March 19th. Group Two Sanitary Sewers, a project advertisement that runs through March 15th, and the bids will be open March 27th. Bill and Pave is coming up, Ransdell Carol's working on the advertisement for the bid. It's not quite ready to put out yet, but it will be soon. General Labor Positions. Civil Service gave the test on March 3rd, on Sunday. There were 17 people who took the test, which is great. Had the test results within a week. We are also, with Bill and Clerk, Custodian Physician, we're still accepting applications through this Friday, and the Civil Service test will be given on March 24th. And if you're interested in picking up an application, the mayor's office or on our city website. And we're accepting applications for summer positions in the parks, lifeguards, concession workers, and the boom mower operator. Anyone interested in a position can pick up an application in the mayor's office. Irving Street Service Garage, we're painting now, the front offices have been painted and carpeted. State elders will be moving in next week, and we'll be starting to move the Water Distribution Garage in this facility, too. The Water Distribution Garage, we mentioned earlier, we're going to close the facility next week. Tight search and closing process already begun. ISO is in town, as Chief Keller mentioned, they've had to send them through all the vehicles, responses, train, 2018, and the equipment and waterfall capabilities to determine our rating. The last meeting with ISO, that's, sorry, that means it's an acronym for Insurance Service Organization, was 10 years ago. Current rating is an ISO 5, and the findings should be released in four to six months. And that's it for Mr. Wagner's report.
Any questions or comments regarding your reports to the Service Safety Director? None? On to Law Director, Mr. Radliff.
Thank you, Madam President. I do have a report tonight. And I tell you, it's in your back there, certainly the annual report. A couple of things to highlight, just one thing I did a little bit different this year that, because I think it was important to note, you guys don't see Sam Caldwell very often, he's our victim advocate. I included in this report, in the description stuff that he does, a complete, a complete text of the Ohio Constitutional Amendment, knows Marx's law, which is a providing rights to victims in criminal cases. It takes up about four pages. So these are all the things that, you know, stand responsible for, with any case where there's a victim, to ensure that these rights are met and satisfied. It's an important job, and one I think is, you know, it's very important to note. And most importantly, it's funded by the state, it's an 85/15 grant, and so we get a lot of, a lot out of that, that grant. The other thing is, Merrick, I mentioned it, that Mr. Grove, we included his section of this report, did a total of 222 property inspections last year and 206 re-inspections. You know, just to be up there one time, we got them all to check and recheck and make sure they're trying to do it. We condemned 10 properties last year. Another 12 got transferred to Land Bank and moved, being condemned. We've got 75 that are in one stage or another, being in four, going through the four process. One thing we did experimentally this last year, so many of our properties are owned by necklace entities, outstate corporations, maybe tied up in the state, maybe in a bankruptcy or bank home, or whatever it is. We have, I think, five properties right now that are owned by foreign state investment companies. Those five properties, their investment company has refused service on the demolitions or criminal charges with respect to the property. Based on those refusals, all five of those companies have been held in contempt by the court. They are currently incurring contempt charges of $1,000 a day. So eventually they'll show up, and we'll have to blow them back. So we'll see, see how that plays out. Something happened in other places, and will continue to happen here. Probably the biggest challenge we have in property maintenance is the absentee owners. If I find they don't exist, they don't respond, they don't care, and so continue to deal with that. I do want to thank this body for its support of those efforts over the years. We've gotten some things accomplished. The Roger Street property, I wasn't here, when I first started this job, I went here 24 hours, and somebody asked me when I was gonna tear those out. So they're finally down, and others are in the process, so it's making a difference. So I do appreciate this body's support as we fight that out. So thank you very much.
All ahead. Okay, any questions or comments for the Law Director this evening? Thank you. Moving on to the auditor, Mr. Schiffer.
Thank you, Madam President. You have a statement cash position for Liam Edwards, the Indian Tax Revenue Preparations, and your Revenue Challenge Department is going to review. And I do have several referrals for Finance Committee. On the first one, we need to make a correction to the appropriation reduction ordinance that was passed at the last meeting for the 2019 Victims of Crime Act. I inadvertently used the wrong department code. It should be 7728, not 7111. Second one, a donation of $1,000 has been received for Safety Town that will need to be appropriated to the General Fund Police Department Materials and Supplies Line Item. And the Fire Department has received a Marx Grant of approximately just under $50,000 for new radios. This will need to be appropriated in the Fire Levy Fund as a capital outlay item. And this item will just be an in and out, because that money will come in and it has to be spent on radios by July. So I will need that appropriated.
Okay, I need a motion then, are there any questions, first of all, for the auditor? If not, I need a motion then to put these three items into Finance Committee correcting the wrong department code, a donation of $1,000 for Safety Town, and the Brent Marx Grant for the Fire Department.
So moved.
Sorry. Motion by Mr. Schach, second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. You have the Auditor's Statement of Cash Position dated February 28, 2019. We'll bring that up the next meeting. And you also have the Treasurer's Report for January of 2019. It's been submitted for your review. Police Chief does not listen to the hearing. I need a motion to accept the city officers' reports.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Foote, second by Mr. Schach to accept the city officers' reports. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. This is where we have visitors' input regarding reports of standing or special committees and of city officers. Does anyone here to address Council this evening? No one? For consideration of legislation for the first time.
We have four pieces of legislation, three ordinances, and one resolution. Ordinance Number 182019, amending and supplementing Section 1501, Part 1, entitled Adoption of Chapter 1501, Ohio Fire Code, in Part 15, entitled Fire Prevention Code of the Confide Ordances of the City of Bucyrus, Ohio. That's referred back to the Health and Safety Committee. Ordinance Number 192019, repealing and replacing Ordinance Number 472018, the Table of Human Resource Staffing Organization for the City of Bucyrus, Ohio, active to January 1, 2019, and declaring an emergency. Referred to Finance. Ordinance Number 202019, repealing and replacing Ordinance Number 2, 2019, establishing the compensation and human resource staffing, sick leave and vacation of employees of various departments in the City of Bucyrus, Ohio, and enacting in its place legislation pertaining to the compensation and human resource staffing, sick leave and vacation of employees of various departments in the City of Bucyrus, Ohio, retroactive to January 1, 2019, and declaring an emergency, as referred to the Finance Committee. Resolution Number 2092019, a resolution authorizing the mayor to apply for, accept, and enter into a water pollution control loan fund, that's WPCLF agreement, on behalf of the City of Bucyrus for planning, design, and or construction of wastewater facilities, and designating a dedicated repayment source for the loan, and declaring an emergency, as referred to the Finance Committee.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion to accept this as the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Schach to accept, I'm sorry, Mr. Foote, to accept this as the first reading and proposed legislation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes.
Sorry, my wife says I'm a little too.
Ordinance Number 18-2019 is referred back to Health and Safety. Ordinance 19-2019 is referred to Finance. Ordinance Number 20-2019 is referred to Finance. And Resolution 209, do what? Resolution Number 209-2019 is Finance, referred to Finance. Okay. Any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that has been read for the first time this evening. Does anyone here to address any of the legislation this evening? No one? Do we need a recess this evening? Committee reports on pending legislation, Health and Service, Health and Safety.
Health and Safety is favorable to Ordinance 182019, the State Fire Code update.
And Finance Committee?
Finance Committee is favorable to Ordinance 19-2019, Rebellion. It's favorable to Ordinance 20-2019, Employ Manpower. Is this last week, Friday, or October? Resolution 209, 2019, the WPCF update.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion to accept this report.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Truka. Motion by Mr. McKeever, seconded by Mr. Trucca. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. For further consideration of pending legislation, for the second and third reading of proposed Ordinance Number 18-2019, which is the Ohio Fire Code update, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text?
So moved.
Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Schach?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Ordinance Number 182019.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed Ordinance Number 18-2019?
So moved.
Second.
Foote?
Yes.
Schach?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Sack?
Ordinance Number 18-2019, Ohio Fire Code update, is duly adopted. For the second and third readings of proposed Ordinance Number 19-2019, which are changes to the bill regarding dispatchers, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text? And declare it an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Schach?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Ordinance Number 192019.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed Ordinance Number 19-2019?
So moved.
Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Schach?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Sack?
Ordinance Number 19-2019, the bill of changes for dispatchers is duly adopted. For the second and third readings of proposed Ordinance Number 20-2019, which is for the employee manpower changes for the dispatchers, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Wireball?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Schach?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Trucca? Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Schach?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Ordinance Number 20-2019, the employee manpower changes for dispatchers is duly adopted. For the second and third readings of proposed Resolution Number 209-2019, which is a WPCLF loan, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Schach?
Yes.
Myers?
No.
Trucca?
Yes.
Sack?
We need two-thirds. We don't have two-thirds. It's held to a second reading. Is there any unfinished business you'd like to discuss this evening? None? Moving on to new business, new miscellaneous business. The 2019 annual reports are in your packet for you to go over, please, if you have questions or comments, bring them back to the next council meeting, if you would, please. Thursday, March the 14th is the Crawford Partnership State of the Vision, from 5:00 to 8:30 p.m., at Pickwood Place, the cost is $75. You can call 419-563-1809 per reservation. Saturday, March the 23rd is the Night of March Madness fundraiser with Wake Wrap from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. at the VFW Post 8999. The cost is $25. If you would like to make a reservation, call 419-563-0550. And Sunday, March the 24th is the Civil Service Exam for Utility Clerk slash Custodian at 1:00 p.m. here in Council Chambers. Registration deadline to take this exam is March the 15th. So call up here at City Hall in the mayor's office to get the information needed. We need to excuse Ms. Sack and Mr. Myers this evening from council meeting. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, seconded by Mr. Schach, to excuse Council Member Sack and Myers. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. Our joint regular committee meetings, all referrals from this council meeting and of any open project list items may be discussed during the committee meetings. Item referrals are?
We have three, three new referrals, these are all to the Finance Committee, from the Auditor, two appropriations, from the Auditor, one reduction, from the Administration, RITA tax collection, and already in committee, and potentially on the, on the agenda for Thursday, is the zoning variance notification protocol, penning a letter from the zoning office.
Okay. And that wraps it up for this evening. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, seconded by Mr. Wireball. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. We are, motion passed.